November sixteenth at five thirty. There is a link to the meeting at the top for the Zoom as well as a call in number with the associated meeting ID. We are having, holding this again via Zoom due to the ongoing pandemic. So with that, I'll have Lisa just confirm that we have a quorum.
Alan.
President.
Murphy.
Present.
Peterson.
Here.
Ratcliffe.
Here.
Valencia.
Present.
Vanderweldy.
Present.
Ben Williams.
Present. All right, we have a quorum. The agenda was properly posted and next up is Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next up is public appearances, public's opportunity to speak. I will put myself on mute in a moment, but if you are in public and wish to speak, please share your name, your address, and hold your comments to no more than three minutes so that if we have a number of folks who would like to speak, we get to all them. All right, moving then on to new business item five. First up is to discuss and consider the 2022 preliminary budget as recommended by the Finance and Personnel Committee, and select a date for the public hearing for the adoption of the 2022 budget. So with that in our packet, we have kind of a walkthrough of what we're going to do and Matt's going to kind of lead that, lead us through that with staff covering the items. So I think it's, what is the page? It's just a memo of the list of packets or contents. So Matt's going to kind of walk through that. So Matt, please go forward.
Yes, thanks, John. And I'll just keep sort of following along. I'll, I'll share my screen throughout here and actually, I should, I should say a couple of times, I'll probably turn it over to staff to take control, to show us some maps and things like that, but we'll just kind of walk through this list as you see here. The staff presentation, just going off of the one we did for Finance Committee took about an hour. So we have about a hour-long presentation of budget requests and memos and then certainly during that time, feel free to interject with any questions or comments you may have, but you know, otherwise certainly afterwards, there'll be time for deliberation and board discussion regarding any budget items to amend, remove, add, things like that. So I'll start out with a brief, high-level summary of, of the budget. The 2021 assessed value tid out for the village increased 1.4%. The financial management plan process that we went through early fall approved 2022 levy that would be a 9.9% increase. The impact of that, if that was what was approved tonight, would be about $132 increase for the average tax bill, which should, which is about 7% increase. The various committees and department heads brought forth requests, requests that were submitted that would equate to if, if approved about a $269 increase, which would be a 14% overall increase, $269 for the average tax bill, I should say. So I, I took those requests and, and going over the financial management plan as well as the, the board's priorities and tried to trim that down and brought that down to $142,325 under the approved financial management plan levy, which came out to about a 5% increase for the average taxpayer, a $99 increase on the tax bill. Following, following that, and, and this was at the Finance Committee at their meeting and they made just one adjustment to the administrator recommended tax levy. And it actually did not change the tax levy, but it lowered the capital fund budget by 16,000, which was it removed the Sustainability Committee's budget requests regarding electric vehicle ready services at the Municipal Services Building. So to just put in, in context for, for the tax levy this year, every $5,000 in the proposed levy equals about $2.10 in the tax bill. The proposed revenues in the general fund increased about 7%. Expenditures are going up about 10%. The main couple items that are not in the budget that were requested, and we'll get into more details on these, there, there's, you'll still hear the proposals even if they're recommended to be cut. And that, that is an additional $20,000 for village beautification initiatives and, and a $58,000 increase for, to contract for brush collection services. Those two items were removed. And then in the village capital budget, as, as mentioned before, the $16,000 cut in the sustainability item from the Finance Committee, which leaves us with a, a total capital budget of 937,000, which is paid for with $400,000 of levy funds, 310,000 of capital fund reserves, 150,000 of general fund reserves and some miscellaneous revenues. Following that, our planned borrowing for 2022, the overall debt service levy goes down by about a percent, $5,000. There are, the, the total estimated borrowing for 2022 is about 7.9 million. This includes two projects, the Glacial Drummond Path as well as the BB Bus Road improvements, which are 20, were 2021 projects that have been that we paid for in cash that will be reimbursing ourselves with, with this borrowing. And then there's a, a planned refinancing for some tid five debt as well. So following the discussion tonight, tonight's discussion would lead into an approval of a preliminary budget, which we would publish tomorrow in the paper and then would be made available both at, at Village Hall and on our website for the public to review ahead of a budget public hearing, which will be held on December sixth. And that concludes kind of the high-level summary here. Which will lead us into the next memos and I'll, I'll preface a dear girl BMS with a reminder to the board that, that you guys have approved this budget and we're working on, normally at these budget meetings in the past, we've, we've had, we've handled all the requests for our joint services directly at the board and not part of our Finance Committee and Budget Workshop process, but it felt more comprehensive and inclusive to make sure that they're that these services are involved in the overall discussion, but just wanted to let you guys know that this is previously approved. So Chief Lane can be relatively brief since that's the case. You can take it from there, Chief.
Good evening. Thanks for having me on to explain our budget tonight. Overall, there is an increase to the amount for our budget request. The increase comes in the form of largely wages for not only our collective bargaining agreement, which has an annual increase attached to it, but we're going with an initiative to staff an ambulance 12 hours per day, every day next year. So that would effectively give us one, or two ambulances during the day and then one ambulance overnight. So the, the large and largest increase is coming from the staffing portion of the initiative. We did have some cost reductions due to some of the things that we had completed as far as our own initiatives. We increased our internal revenue that we believe we're going to get some calls from service because of being more available and being able to run more calls for service. And another part of the increase is also due to a budget initiative for our ambulance that we're hoping to take delivery of in mid-year. So overall, that's kind of a high-level explanation of the budget. I guess if Matt wanted to get me more, me to get more in-depth than that, I could.
Thank you, Chief. All right, we'll, we'll keep moving along in case, unless anyone jumps in. So we'll just keep going relatively fast. Like I said, it could be an hour of stuff here for you. Next, we have the, the Fire Department and, and this was approved by the Joint Fire Department Committee, but not by the board as of yet. So Chief Archibald's on to touch base on mainly some of the increases that are being requested and and you can take it from there, Chief.
Okay, you just want me to go through all the, the various increases and explain why we're asking for more, basically?
Yep, that'd be great.
Okay. So our first item is item A, the joint-owned apparatus expenses. We're looking at adding funds for an apparatus repair fund. In the past, any large items that were unexpected, we, we basically came back to both municipalities and asked for money to pay for that. In order to avoid doing that in the future, we just put in money to plan ahead for some larger item repairs and any item, any repair should come out of that as opposed to coming back for more money. We also added funds for replacing the tires on engine four. That's something that NFPA recommends. It's not required, but after bringing it to the Joint Fire Committee, it was voted on that we would follow the NFPA guidance. So every seven years, the tires will be replaced on the trucks. So engine four would be the first one that needs it. Also in that fund, we added MDT router installs. I have a whole explanation about MDTs. They're basically the mobile data terminals that are used for tracking call responses and call data. It was one of the things that PAA has already come out and recommended that we have done or get to help with increasing accuracy on our call data. So that increases about 28,700. We added extra money to the personnel costs and reimbursement because we added a couple of extra officers. Currently, we pay each officer about a hundred bucks in a month for extra training and extra tasks they have to do outside the normal scope of the job. For the division expenses, we added some extra money for the fire prevention, which is what we do at the schools and the open house. And then also the chief account, which goes to paying for our memberships to the Dane County Fire Chiefs, Wisconsin Fire Chiefs and some other organizations. The next item we came up with was maintenance contracts and certifications. We added some money to the extrication equipment. That's basically every year, our hydraulic extrication equipment is all tested and recertified. We have some extra equipment now, so we added extra funds to cover that. Part of the MDT that we want to add is the CAD licensing that's required to use. You have to purchase it and it's a one-time cost of $1,200 to the unit. And after that, there's a 22% annual fee as opposed to the, the large fund. And then also with that is the MDT VPN. It's another software that's required to use the software and that fee is good for three years. So that won't be on every year's budget, just every couple of years. The next item is for the phone. We had to add funds for mobile phone data for the MDT systems and had to add funds in there to purchase the routers that, that they'll use for internet for each of the trucks. Our next line item is new equipment. We added extra funds for firefighter turnout gear. The JFC approved purchasing enough firefighter, or enough gear that all of our members are up to date with turnout gear. But we had a very large increase in membership this year. So we added some extra money. So next year, if we have a large increase again, we don't have to, we will be able to purchase new gear for the new members. Added money for oil dry because we've been responding to a lot more vehicle calls that have used it and we just need more money to account for all that extra funding or actually, extra use. Added money for uniform badges to cover all the members that we added this year and possible new members next year. Added some money for the accountability system because the person that made our tags is no longer doing it. He retired a few years ago or that he retired about a year ago. And the company that took over for him is no longer honoring his prices anymore. So that stuff's all gone up a little bit. And then the last item in the new equipment is for the tablets and the mounting brackets, which is the actual hardware we would need for the MDT systems. That's a one-time fee. Item G is the new engine three outfitting. We talked about putting new large diameter hose on the truck when we purchased it because a lot of ours has failed hose testing. Also going to purchase a couple portable generators because to cut cost on the new truck, we did not install a, a mounted generator because they're extremely expensive. So and then the last item was for shelving and brackets. When the new truck is completed by Pierce, it'll go to the seller, which is Reliant Fire Apparatus. They'll add all the brackets and shelving that we need to mount all of our tools. So that when the truck comes in, it's ready to go in service right away. In the past, we did a lot of that in-house, but the person that did a lot of that actually just retired from the department. And the last time he did it for us, he didn't do it for free anymore. He actually charges pretty significantly. So we'll just have the manufacturer do it as opposed to hiring somebody else to do it. And then the last item is for the town. So that one doesn't really concern you guys as much.
Sorry, guys. I got a, a young one that just ran into me here. Tracy, you've got a, you got a good night night. All right. Sorry, guys.
Matt, that's our student representative.
Yes, but she definitely can't, can't be a voting member. All right, door's closed. Sorry about that. Thanks, Nick, for coming tonight. All right, I'll get, I'll get it back together. All right, the next item. I'm proposing a, a third quarter mid-year hire of a communications and marketing manager position. This would be a, about a $23,000 impact to the tax levy, overall impact across all funds of 51,000 between water and sewer utilities, as well as our tip districts. And I, I think this will, position will really help provide a consistent strategic communication strategy across all of our village communication, communications, the website, our social media platforms, probably some new social media platforms as well as digital news, newsletters and public relations and all sorts of things there. On top of that, to, to continue and carry on and implement our marketing and branding efforts that have been continuing with CDA and just with our, our growth and board's priorities in, in regards to communication and engagement with residents and, and and, and all the new logo and branding efforts, I think this position would really help and is worthy of consideration. And I'd still pass it on to, oh, sorry, I have another question.
Yeah, just really quick. Um, I'm trying to understand the financial impact when it's, is 51,000 divided, divided across a, a various budgets? And then the cost represents salary and benefits for a mid-year hire. Can you, can you explain the numbers in this paragraph here? Because it's confusing me. Like, I'm just trying to understand, like, it's a mid-year hire.
Yep.
The salary is 70. Is that, is that 70 at the mid-year hire? Or is that an annual salary?
That's the, 70 would be the annual salary.
And then help me understand the fif, the, the 51,000 number and then the 23,000 number at the beginning and end.
51,000 would be a, a potential $70,000 salary plus benefits. So salary and benefits for a full year would be 102,000. 51 times two.
Okay. And then, does that make sense? Yeah. And then 23,000 would be at the impact on the tax levy.
Correct, correct. So in a, yeah, so in a in 2023, that would be 46,000 on the tax levy. With, with the other funds picking up the balance of 60, 60 some thousand there.
So it'd be more than 70 is the?
No.
You said 100 and, I'm just trying to understand the math.
Yeah, 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 you bet. Set salary and benefits. So the salary is 70,000, but with benefits, it's around 100,000.
Okay. So the, so the sentence should read, this cost represents salary from a year higher of a marketing instead of salary and benefits? I guess the numbers are confusing between 70 and, and you said 70 and then 102. So I'm just, the numbers are, it's a lot of numbers coming at me.
Sal, salary and benefits, 102,000. I, I just wanted you guys to know about what this position would pay, but the, the impact to the budget. The tax levy would be 23,000 this year, 46,000 in 20, 2023.
So the, Matt, the other 32,000 is like what the village pays for the health insurance, like the employer portion and retirement and all that other stuff we've done.
Life insurance, dental.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, so I had to read that sentence again. So it's a potential starting, but more than likely it's 102.
No, 70,000 is the salary. Yeah, I mean, I guess I, I could, I could have added the, the benefit package on a $70,000 salary is another 30,000. But all the village will be paying out of the general fund will be 23,000 with a mid-year hire.
Yes, you, you're showing a, a mid-year hire and then you're showing an annualized number is a base, the base salary is 70 and you're saying an additional 30, 32. And maybe that's what, you know, the confusing part is it doesn't quite read that way, but I, I hear what David's saying. It's a little confusing how it's worded, but. Yeah. I, I mean, Matt, you answered my question, right? Like Yeah, I think it's answered. The 102. But that number.
The all-in is 102 and a, on a normal, on a normal year. This year it's 51,000. So that's what, that's what that first number, the all-in number is for, for 2022 is what's listed there in that first line.
For a mid-year hire.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I guess. And then you're analyzing. Yep. Yep. Okay. I'll catch on eventually. I, I guess it just could be worded slightly differently, I guess. That's, that's the only reason why I asked the question, right? I, I got what I needed. Thank you.
All right, and JJ?
Well, now you got me nervous about my wording here, David. So hopefully this one's a little clearer. This is for what we term the Public Works Operations Manager Position. Broadly, my new, that the administrator role is designed to assist Matt, Aaron and Lisa, as well as some other folks over at Villa Tall with various multiple hats they wear. This position here is to take on much of the supervisory and the day-to-day planning and operational work in Public Works and Utilities Department. Position will be much like me, required to have a CDL and a DNR Water Works Operator License. So if they can work in the field if needed, and I'm anticipating 10 to 20%, depending on the project and what's going on, will be out in the field. And for this one, we're anticipating three quarters of the year, hiring around April 1st with a maximum salary of 75. But for these purposes, we factored in full benefits. So, and this one will also be split and this one's split evenly across general fund and then the water and sewer. So the impact of the levy is $27,000 for next year. All right.
Actually, JJ, just dangle. So is it, is the salary of 75,000 plus benefits?
Yep. So, and that was a little more than what, you know, 105, I think, all in if, if they take, you know, full healthcare, family and, you know, we plan for, we plan for the maximum and then basically anticipating three quarters of that. But with the April 1st start for this budget and then spread evenly over water, sewer and then the 27,000.
Okay, so for that, David, you'd multiply that 27,000 by three, that would be the, the total amount allocated for for 22.
Yep.
All right. Here we have the, Matt had mentioned this isn't in the budget presented, but we'll talk about it. Didn't bring this last year, but prior year, got proposals for contracting brush collection. I know Monona and McFarland both do that, and this is the same company that gave me the proposal. And in this memo, I basically crossed out what we spend in, in staff and equipment time. And then as Matt was going through the budget, he, he gave me a call and I roughly calculated kind of the ancillary costs with me and Kristen here in our office and our staff when they're kind of going out and reactively responding to various things and kind of conservatively estimated maybe another 9,000 or so. So it's, it's roughly 59, $60,000 in time and equipment that we spend in brush collection. Unfortunately, when I got a proposal in, that cost came in at 50, just slightly over 58,000 from the proposal I had received from the company a couple of years prior. It was significantly higher than they had proposed two years before. So ultimately, it's not nearly as easy to justify as it was a few years back, but still something that, that we should definitely keep in the, in mind for the future. As brush collection really is, it's, it's identified every year as the most dangerous thing our department does, and it's the only thing anybody's been hurt doing in my time and even prior, I think, looking back. So.
JJ, I just have two, two quick questions on this one. Does the quote from the, I don't know who they are, does company include the Christmas tree pickup? I noticed our dollar amount doesn't. Do you have the asterisk there? Did theirs?
I don't think it did. To pull it back up. So if they gave a time of materials, so I tried to ballpark it, you know, what they would spend actually due Christmas trees. I don't think it would be like a normal weekly collection for them. I think it'd be pretty quick, but no, that would be an additional cost of the 58.
Okay. And if, if we were to outsource it, do you think we would still have access to the chipped wood?
We have, that's a question. They, that We have, that's a question, they, that might be one of the reasons this cost was higher. They called me the day before providing it. We wanted to know if we wanted to keep them, and it's getting harder and harder for us to get rid of chips. And no matter what, we'll always have our forester trimming and and doing other things where we have our own brush to handle. We'll have our own brush pile, so we could always offer chips in a small amount, but it's even just finding farmers that'll take them, it's getting harder and harder. It's a constant struggle for public works folks around this area and probably the whole state.
So this, so this proposal included them taking that, taking it?
I told them to take it all off our plate, yep.
Okay.
My rationale on the cut was just kind of really just looking at the economics of a fifty-eight thousand dollar increase to the levy and and hoping that I that that would be worthwhile if it could free up a a full-time staff person. And given that the time spent is about eleven hundred hours. A full-time person for the village is two thousand eighty. So it just didn't, the cost benefit of that fifty-eight thousand basically would be spending fifty-eight thousand more to free up a half a person. And, you know, that just didn't didn't quite make sense to me, so that's why I cut it, or I'm recommending cutting it.
I guess, JJ, when I read this, maybe I'm just having a tough night, but like, I'm reading, it would, it says here, in order to offer the same level of service our staff currently provides, it would cost fifty-eight thousand for twenty-twenty-two. But then I see on page, I don't know what page this is, but I see this, you have this table here of dollars. And at the bottom, it says fifty thousand dollars for eight collections per year in staff and equipment, is that? Am I reading this wrong? It costs us fifty grand to do eight collections a year, but it would privatize it, it would cost fifty-eight?
Yep, and that's where, you know, that, to his credit, Matt was asking me a lot of good follow-up questions. Because it's, I didn't factor in the calls we take here in the office, the the various different things we do chasing things outside of just the brush collection week. So that's where it came up with, it's it's roughly fifty-nine thousand in our time and and equipment, yep.
So it costs us fif- I guess, give me, give me an apples-to-apples number, because like
It's almost identical, honestly, once we crunched everything in that two ugly spreadsheets. It's it's fifty-eight to fifty-nine thousand, like we spend fifty-nine thousand. And, you know, and that includes, you know, my estimated probably two hours per month in things that I'm handling, whatever they may be related to brush. And then time that Kristen, our utility clerk, is taking calls and managing things, so the only way, I guess if I were trying to sell it, the thing would be, I think, it it balances out as as even, fifty-eight to fifty-nine. But then we have this staff freed up that week to go take care of some other things, so I mean, that's where theoretically, I suppose there's the benefit there of of we now have these these folks that can go do some of the other things.
Let's go back to the to the beginning of your budget request, though, where you talk about injuries. So tell me about I'm trying to think, time lost because of injuries, now we
We only had, the one, it was before I I got here, we did have a a staff member who ended up having to have knee surgery, and there was some significant time loss. But that was, I want to say, Matt, I don't even know if you were here yet, that was, that might have been quite a while ago. The injuries I've seen are just, you know, fill out the form and follow up, and I don't believe anybody even ended up going to the doctor. So, been lucky, it's just the the insurance folks that come and interview me annually. This is the one thing they point to. Everything else, we get high marks, and this thing, they just say, keep trying to get rid of it.
Okay, because, all right, the way I read that was like, we've we've had significant and again, this is how, maybe I misinterpreted, but the way I read it was like significant time off over the last X number of years? If that's not the case, then then it's a wash, then.
Yeah, no, no, one, one, and it was prior to me starting here, a long time ago.
Okay, understood, thanks.
Yeah, and David, my thought was, if it's if it's a wash, then it's it's really difficult to add, you know, then you're adding, it's a wash, plus you're adding in money to the levies, so, you know, with minimal additional staff time that could do other things.
Yep, totally agree.
Okay. All right, and JJ, sustainability?
All right, Sustainability Committee had some requests that that landed in the operating budget. The first is for a thousand dollars to go towards three events, broadly speaking, three sustainability events. The bike event, participation in Marketplace Days and and other things. Use this money to buy flyers, advertisements, and then prizes and things for for the kids. The other one is six thousand dollars for rain garden installation. There was some discussion as to where exactly we put it, but it's beyond village property. With the thinking being we would have a professional rain garden landscaper do one and have our public works staff watch and copy it somewhere else and do it cheaper the second time around, and get two of them for six thousand dollars. The other one here is community membership at the advocate level to Wisconsin Bike Fed. I believe at this level, they offer quite a bit of education materials and and training and and things we can do to to talk about bike safety with residents and and advocate and show off our our growing bike facilities, too. And next is the annual cost for B-cycles operating and maintenance. The capital budget item we'll have here in a little bit has twenty thousand dollars for the upfront cost covering the purchase of twelve B-cycles. And each one of those docks, it's one dock and one bike, each one is a thousand dollars a year annually for operating and maintenance costs. So assuming that they stay in the the capital purchase there, this would be the annual cost to maintain the B-cycle that we're talking about installing here in the village to encourage folks to get out like our growing network.
How many docks?
I believe twelve, each dock, and how do you, John, correct me if I got any of this wrong, but I think it was one, it's one dock, one bike. And with twenty thousand dollars in capital, they have to buy us twelve.
So you, so you have one station with twelve docks?
I think the docks are just a small separate, like a bike and a dock are one thing together. But I'm thinking that the thought was basically one end of the village and the other, so maybe six kind of split. I don't know, we got too far into the details of the plan there, but.
So you, so having worked at Trek, I, we always talked about about stations, right? Like, we never really talked about docks and bikes, because typically a a deployment, right, would have, like, you you would talk and then, not necessarily docks, you'd talk for stations, right? So like, how many different places I can stop? The thing is, you only have so many minutes to get from station to station, right? And if you only have two, like, I can either just, I just take it out for a spin, and I bring it back to the same station, or I have to go to the other station, right? Dock it and then take it back out, like, it's I like the idea, but at the same time, it's like, with only two stations, you're kind of limited as to where you can go.
I think the thinking was, and again, I'll I'll defer to anybody that remembers the meeting better, but I think thinking was with the hotel and the path extension to the north coming, that that would be a good spot. Maybe it's just for visit, maybe they're all located out near the hotel, and folks can bring the path all the way down and Main Street here and go to eighteen fifty-five and then ride it back to their hotel room or that type of thing. But I I I think we were leaving it open to discussion and planning.
Can you make that ride from the hotel to eighteen fifty-five on a B-cycle in fifteen minutes?
Oh, you gotta be able to do it. I don't know, I've never, I've never ridden one.
You and I ride bikes a lot more, JJ, than most people do.
I, yep, but I I can, I can make it on my bike.
Dave, I don't, I don't understand the fifteen minutes. When I've done B-cycles, I get them for an hour or two hours.
Hour, okay. It keeps changing.
In Madison, but I don't know.
I think you can change, I think if you own the B-cycles, you can set the timer for whatever you want, I think.
Would we be part of the same B-cycle network that that is in Madison?
No, we are, yep, we are our own thing.
I think they track all the bikes and do all the maintenance for us, so if one was off somewhere, they they can track them down, which I think is helpful. And it wouldn't be any extra for our staff to go find them, maintain them. That's all on B-cycle to maintain the bikes, so I guess that's one perk. And we did talk about perhaps soliciting sponsorships to help offset costs. And B-cycle would help us do that, too.
I think you're right, sir, I think it's thirty minutes per bike. But I think, I think if you if you own the bikes, I think you can, you can set that threshold. I don't know, it's been a while. Was it, I guess, was there a lot of I guess, between all the committees, was there was there a discussion about where to put the stations? Or it was like, we'll buy this, we'll buy it all and then we'll figure out where to put it?
I think the discussion I remember was kind of the north-south around the hotel and that the fact that there's a lot of businesses now out in the Commerce Park, but I think there might be a little bit of an aspect of we want them, let's get it through the budget, and we can start doing the work. Me again, all right, Village Beautification, this was kind of a broad one, I've had kind of varied requests. The largest one being doing something different with the roundabouts and or the signage out near the Commerce Park off the interstate, as well as other different, we've got a beautification line of five thousand dollars to spend there. So this was just the request to bump that up. But ultimately, I just didn't stay in for right now, but it was just kind of broadly bumping it up to try and see what we could maybe do with the roundabouts or out in the entrance to the Commerce Park.
My rationale on cutting it is, we've, for the last handful of years, have budgeted five thousand dollars, and those five thousand haven't been fully utilized in the past, and then more difficult to to fund things in the Commerce Park now that the Commerce Park is part of TID five and not in the expenditure period, so it makes it, it falls entirely on the levy. And then the third component was that the, with the CDA's marketing and branding efforts, they're planning on doing some banners and decorations and things like that as part of their request, which is, which Aaron will be going over later tonight, so I felt like there was some duplication of efforts and you know, let's see, let's see what the five thousand dollars gets us this year, plus the marketing and branding efforts and go from there, but that was, that was my thought in in lowering it back down to five thousand. All right, next we have Chief Labor with a request for a couple additional patrol officers.
Good evening, so as the village grows, so must the police department. And right now, we have thirteen full-time officers. Our projected village population at the end of twenty-two is about eighty-six hundred people. So the general rule of thumb in the state of Wisconsin is you're you're supposed to have in the area of two officers per thousand population, so once we hit eight thousand, we should be in the rough, roughly in the area of sixteen officers. So the proposal is to add two police officers in twenty-twenty-two to get us up to fifteen and keep us pretty pretty close to where we should be staffed. And right now, it's it's, the officers are cutting a little thin as far as calls for service and being able to do proactive things. We continue to get hit on an almost daily basis with property crimes and people trying to steal vehicles, steal things from vehicles, burglaries, things like that. So we are busy, this is a need, it's a public safety request, and I I am highly recommending this part. And then one other thing I was proposing is that we add a sergeant position, it would be a promotion. It's not adding a brand-new position, it's just promoting an existing position, and that would be about a five thousand dollar addition to their salary to get that position. So as we add officers, we should be adding supervisory positions, and this would give us a supervisor on each shift so that we have that span of control that's recommended and best practices. And Matt, do you want me to go into capital stuff like the police car?
Not yet, but we'll circle back to you shortly.
Okay.
Chief, I just have a quick question. It feels silly, I don't know it, but what is the order of the rank, is sergeant, physical sergeant, lieutenant, cap, sergeant, captain, lieutenant? Or where does the sergeant fall in the rank, I guess?
Well, you have officers, and then the sergeant is the first-level supervisor. The lieutenant is above that, and then the chief. Some departments, like our lieutenant, he could be a captain or an assistant chief, but we just call him lieutenant.
Thank you.
All right, we're going into some capital items now, back to, back to JJ.
All right, Public Works Department has the replacement of our message boards in the capital plan for next year. They're over thirteen years old, while we've had them out there, we've had a lot of trouble with them, they're kind of a anyway, they're they're long overdue for replacement. That said, they do still function, and one of them for sure is better than the other. So when we do get requests from community groups or you want to advertise, whether it's Music in the Grove or or something going on, we'll have a lot more flexibility to say yes a lot more often. The, you know, the old ones back out, because they're not really worth much in trade-in value, so we're gonna, we're gonna hold on to them. Also, it has the purchase of a radar traffic data collector. Essentially, I want to use this, it's it's an inconspicuous gray box that you can put on a pole and collect speed and traffic count information without making the traffic, the drivers aware that you're doing so. So we rely a lot on anecdotal reports from neighbors and just like me, looking outside my house, everybody's flying by at fifty miles an hour, nobody stops. But this will allow us to actually gather actual information with real driver behavior. So then we can, you know, use that info to maybe plan traffic calling projects, things like that, see if we really do have issues we can address. The street repaving is in there, it's been incredibly successful in bringing our roads a lot, a lot better. When we show that report annually, our our ratings are improving steadily, and a lot of it's due to this program here in the capital plan. And building maintenance, we put a lot of it on hold for the facility study, and I think we're gonna use a lot of that money on upgrading and getting some more energy-efficient HVAC equipment here in the municipal services building next year. And, looks like me again.
Before you move on, JJ, a quick question. The those gray boxes that gather the traffic info, do you have to pick one spot for those, or are they movable?
No, I've only had a couple proposals I've looked at, but they're movable, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Come with software, I can just run out there with my laptop, it sounds like, and plug in and grab all the info, and we can move it somewhere else.
Great, thank you.
Matt had touched on, these are the couple of capital items from the Sustainability Committee. You touched on the EV ready, the municipal services building. Ultimately, that might make more sense if there's some work going on here in the future. And quite frankly, we don't have any charged or electric vehicles quite yet, or any plans to purchase them next year, so there's no rush on getting the building ready quite yet. And we touched on the B-cycle, this is just the upfront cross, the cost to purchase those.
All right, thanks, JJ, Sean, some capital items.
Hi, good evening, everyone, just a couple items for Parks and Rec in the capital budget. Continuing, first item is our ADA compliance project, so we'll continue to try and bring everything in our parks up to complete compliance. uh complete compliance. Um we've been working on this for several years now. Trying to kind of focus some attention on North Lawn Park, doing some paths to and from the shelter to the uh ball diamond areas. That is uh has been a recurring ten thousand dollar line item. Um second thing that we were looking to do is add some irrigation uh to Fireman's Baseball Field. It's turning out to with the help of uh of our our MG Booster Club, it's turning out to be a really beautiful facility. One of the things that we lack there is just moisture. We're able to use a water reel and irrigate during the day, which is obviously not an optimal time um to be spreading water under fields. It's ninety degrees and the wind's blowing. So uh we would like to to add irrigation to that field. Going to give it some more playability, some safety factors come into play there and just an all-around um making the facility that much better. So those are the two things that Parks and Rec have in the capital fund.
Thanks, Sean. Chief, back to you on your capital items.
Great. Uh so for the uh the biggest one in this is obviously the uh the squad car. So we, on a yearly basis, purchase a new vehicle so that we keep our fleet uh up to date. And we don't get a bunch of old vehicles that require a bunch of maintenance and aren't safe. So we have done a really good job of keeping our vehicles up to date. And uh I think we have a twenty-one, a twenty-eighteen, two-sixteens, a fourteen. So you know, we've got some vehicles that are getting a little older, but as long as we keep on replacing them, it's it's worked out pretty good for us. We don't have a huge maintenance budget because of that, so we're saving money there. And this year would be the first year that we would be getting a hybrid squad. And so that'll save us about thirty-five hundred dollars a year on fuel because when the officer is sitting idling on the side of the road or wherever, it's not, the vehicle is not running. It's not internal combustion engine working. It's the batteries are working. So these hybrids in law enforcement have uh have been out for a couple of years now. First year was a little rough. The second year now, they've they've been functioning really well and I feel comfortable uh going to that vehicle. And uh then we have the radar speed signs that we would like to get. Those are solar-powered. The ones, the one we have right now is we move around manually and we have to replace the batteries in it. So if you're driving through the village and you see our radar sign sitting out there, sometimes it's working, sometimes it isn't. It's probably because we didn't get a chance to get over there and change the batteries on it. So this would eliminate that because these radar signs at the entrances to the village would not require us to go out there and do anything, wouldn't put us on the side of the road. So it's it's a pretty good way of doing these things. And that would be a cost of about ten thousand five hundred. And then the other thing that I'm recommending, and this came up recently, is the license plate readers that are stationary. Lots of police departments in the southern United States use them. The Milwaukee area has a bunch of departments that have been using them. And I would propose that we get two of these signs. Right now, we just started using them on a two-month trial basis. And it's pretty amazing the ability of these license plate readers to catch stolen vehicles, to catch stolen auto plates, if there's a missing person or uh an amber alert. These uh license plate readers stationed at the various parts in the village would alert the officers on duty immediately that a stolen vehicle has entered the village and that we could then go to that location and try to find the vehicle. The past two days, we've had numerous occasions where we're reacting to stolen vehicles coming into the village, stealing gas, attempting break-ins. And so we're always reactionary in our in our response to these. These signs would let us know what vehicle is in the village, take a picture of it and then let us know real time in our squads and on our our, you know, in the station when these vehicles are here and then we could respond accordingly. And they cost twenty-five hundred dollars per year. Uh that's not just the upfront cost. That's what it costs to have those cameras. So I'm recommending two, but frankly, it's like stationing police officers at the entrances to the village. And it's, I think it's really a good investment. I think that's it for capital.
Thanks, Sam.
Chief, if I can ask one question, how many arrests have we made with the temporary ones that we've got in the village now?
Well, we only have one working. We're still waiting for the electrician to hook up the other four. The one that's working is solar-powered and we had uh we had two hits on it so far from the National Crime Information Center. And so those are, they're working well, but it's only one camera and it's only facing um southbound. So it's catching vehicles coming off I ninety-four and coming into the village. The other four aren't up and operating yet. So if we would have had the north-facing camera on N working yesterday and the one on Cottage Grove Road to the west by Damascus, we would have known that those stolen vehicles were in the village and we could have responded accordingly.
Thank you.
All right, Aaron, with the CDA request item.
Thanks, Matt. Um so as you know, this year, twenty-twenty-one, the CDA has been working with the Distillery, uh Marketing Consultant out of Madison and rebranding. Um their work this year included doing some research, work on the village and comparable communities, interviewing stakeholders, went through the logo uh design process. They've done some document templates. Then they put together an outline of um steps you could take going here, going into the future here. Um and given that this is still a high priority of the board for economic development and marketing, uh the CDA is requesting another thirty thousand dollars for twenty-twenty-two. The plan that Distillery recommended and that the CDA approved includes physical assets such as street banners, event banners, um some welcome packets and window clinks along with uh media assets such as a marketing video and some targeted digital outreach through uh social media or uh similar online advertising.
And and the the capital fund is actually picking up fifteen thousand of this. The other fifteen thousand is um being funded through the TIP districts and um utilities. All right, um David or Melissa, would you want to touch base on the Library Planning Committee's item? Um I don't think I see Cindy on on here. I don't know if that was on her radar tonight or not.
Um sure. The so basically, we requested ten thousand for the financial feasibility study. Um and the Friends of Cottage Grove Library would also be donating um matching funds for that study. Um and then five thousand dollars towards an engineering consultation and impact fee study um for the library. And then um lastly, uh staff to to um a staff help with uh staffing the library board is what the Library Planning Committee had requested.
Melissa, is that existing staff or are you thinking there'd be some a new person?
Um existing, I guess. And um when this was approved, I don't know, September, August? I don't know. It feels like forever ago. It, we weren't sure if there would be another staff person um or uh hired, if that would be in our budget at all. So it that's um it it's just to let the board know that the library board needs some help with staff time because current the Library Planning Committee was doing it all on our own. And it's it's a lot of work on on your own. So just some staff help is uh beneficial.
And and for a- as long as the Public Works Operations Manager uh position is approved, th- this time can be allocated to uh JJ's deputy administrator duties. And that's the that's the plan if this is uh approved, so.
So there's no dollar amount with number three. It's more of an FYI that some staff time. Because other other committees don't have, aren't charged for staff time, right? There's no dollar amount here. Okay.
I'm gonna go on a limb here and say Cindy was just trying to cover all of her bases here.
And there was this, she included um proposals and other other things that you saw there in the packet. I just have to scroll through. That that gets us through um the capital requests. And then uh Public Works and uh Parks and Rec have items that, projects that are to be funded through the plan borrowing for twenty-twenty-two. So that leads into JJ going over his uh public works items.
All right, I could attempt to share my screen here. Hopefully, you're all seeing the area of Park and Grove Street. That is the first project planned in this memo here. As you're aware, the bike path portion with cap grant funding was completed through the first block and then up through the park and over to Vilas. So next year, we're hoping to uh complete the rest of this. Uh we're gonna add over one hundred on-street parking stalls so that Sean can continue to add fund things in the park and not have to have more parking lots. The next one, actually, we'll just go right here. We'll just head south.
Did you, really quick on that last one, on on Grove Street? It's a map thing, but are you gonna go all, like, where does the private road start?
Yeah, it's around, it's around where the orange dash stops. Yeah, this is just a long driveway. So it's right, right around here, I think, is where the village right away ends.
Okay. Just wanted to double check, thank you.
That portion actually um will just be a really uh basic, kind of pulverized, reshaped. There's a couple of little culverts we'll replace in there, but no major reconstruction on that portion, just basically just some new asphalt up the road.
And that's what I was kind of gonna ask about, so thank you. But right now, it's not even like basic asphalt. It's more kind of like crumbled road. It's an
Yes, it's and it is, it's time-consuming for our folks to go up there and put more temporary cold patch asphalt constantly. So yeah, it will be nice for for those folks and for our staff.
Um JJ, what's the, what's the what's the lifetime or the life expectancy for what you lay up there?
Up there, we'll have, and I think I saw Josh on, we'll do it right. Um I mean, it will get, you know, you say thirty and you, in the back of my mind, I hope for fifty. Um because, you know, that we still don't fund roads at the level we need to, so. We'll, we'll do it right for the the traffic that sees and everything. So we'll, we'll get some decades out of it.
Okay, I just know those residents up there have been patiently awaiting a new road.
Yes, they have. We're gonna make them very happy because they've heard me say it was a low priority on my list for years, so they're gonna be thrilled.
Thank you.
All right, um just kind of jumping. Um we'll jump over here to reconstruction of East Taylor and Ridge Road. Kind of similar to Grove Street, this portion here of the rural section of Ridge Road, yeah, the plan is to just basically, again, replace that with new asphalt out in the rural section. As to East Taylor, there's a little bit of curb and gutter addition planned. And then there's a a long stretch of old water main that we're gonna replace um while we've got that road torn up. So this one, in uh one point two seven five, eight hundred and twenty-five is village borrowing, but four hundred and fifty will be water utility cash to replace that water. Right, heading north. This is the exciting one next year, West Oak. Uh Public Works Committee kind of changed direction on us on this one over the past year. It was in the plan as just essentially new asphalt. Given the width of this street and the concerns with speeding, the plan has changed now to shrink it down, which we know slows traffic. So there's gonna be some curb and gutter replacement along the south side. And then the addition of uh Mopé use path all along here. This is another neighborhood that's missing a lot of sidewalks. So this is gonna be um great for those folks there to to get out of the streets. We'll have, the plan is for a uh RRFB crossing here to join up to the north-south um path as well. And then basically, when folks are on their bikes, we'll get them safely over to here in this portion where traffic is much. I, the speed limit's actually posted at fifteen and there are sidewalks already. So then we're making a nice bike and ped connection back over here to BB two. And last but not least, completing the bike route to the north with the park grant funding. And then that that too has grown over the last year or two into a little bit of urbanization along N and then replacement of that asphalt. Been out there recently, you know, um that asphalt's in pretty bad shape from basically school road north to the to the concrete at uh Commerce. So this plan also involves uh replacing all that at the same time we're out there doing the bike path and the curb and gutter. And that concludes the project's plan for Public Works next year.
Hey, JJ. And um will that include the crossing at Limerick?
That will, yes, most likely, but that's the developer that's responsible for it. But most likely, that construction will happen at the same time and we'll build them back.
Okay. And um so everyone is aware, the county did put in funding in their budget for the Park and Ride Grant uh for next year to help cover the remaining amount that we weren't awarded this year. Um in addition to a couple of other projects in other communities that weren't awarded their full amount either.
Thanks, Melissa. Um JJ has some uh sustainability uh committee-related items too that are I should say mainly item that's uh requested for to be part of the borrowing next year.
Yep, thanks, Matt. Sorry, I thought I was done for a while. Um the solar panels here on Municipal Services Building. Basically, we've got three hundred and ten thousand planned for in the Financial Management and uh borrowing. We could still, there's basically kind of two different options. There was kind of a smaller version and then there there was a, Josh's team took a look and they, there's a bigger version that would be for the three hundred plus thousand. We'll look at which one makes the most sense. Both um basically offer the ability to increase when when we need it without um wasting any cost. Now it can all be added later. And if if and when some work happens on this building, um these can also uh, these won't hinder any of that work. Basically, it's it's planned to go along with maybe growth in this building and growth uh in in our power needs here. So um, yep. And the other one, as Matt mentioned, this one's really just one. The Sustainability Committee wanted to have uh basically Clark and Grove EV ready for some of the parking stalls that we're putting in there. And in talking with the engineers, that's basically a uh minimal cost, maybe possibly a few thousand on the multi-million dollar project. Um but basically, we just add some conduit into some places where we're gonna wanna install uh EV chargers possibly in the future.
So you you'd make it EV-ready, but you wouldn't install any stations?
Yep, basically just make sure that we've got condo we can pull power to when we do want to install them. Our our thinking was kind of, for my thinking anyway, was once we see the plans all done, that we identify, you know, maybe the best parking stall, so we can encourage folks that you want to park the closest to whichever Sean's amenities you're heading to. That you wanna park the closest to whichever Sean's amenities you're heading to, you get the you bring an EV charger, your your front row.
Okay.
For the solar project on the uh municipal municipal services building. Um, are we changing the roof or or is the roof fine for years or? I know that was a concern previously.
It it has been, the current company we use for our annual maintenance or uh three times a year maintenance. Says that it's in good shape, keep it up with what we're doing annually and it should be fine, should last fifty years. So basically, when we looked at when the folks first said that you wanna make sure you time that. Overall, if you're looking for overall cost benefit analysis, if we replace the roof even ten years early. That just kills any return on investment that you're getting from the solar panels, so really. Thinking is we'll just maximize the maintenance of it, it's in good shape now, we'll just really step that up and make sure that it at least lasts the life of these solar panels. And so far, the experts seem confident it will, um, and I hope to keep it up annually.
Alright, thanks, thanks JJ, um. Sean, do you want me to stop stop sharing, are you gonna? Share your screen?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Alright. So several, um, hopefully you can all see that, right? You see Community Park, everybody?
It is coming. Nothing for me yet.
My computer's being slow. Well, while we wait for that to hopefully come up, I do. I'd like to talk about is a pickleball court, uh, actually four pickleball courts that we're looking to put in at um. At Community Park, uh, this was in the financial management plan starting in twenty twenty. It's a, it's an extremely, that sport is growing leaps and bounds and I get, we get several calls monthly. Uh, in the office about just adding if we're ever gonna add pickleball courts to uh the village and so. It's it's a fun for. Not yet.
You're live now.
Okay, good, um, so it's it's a it's a good conversation to be able to have with folks that uh at least that they're they're planning for the village. So again, four pickleball courts, uh, somewhere towards the the parking lot area is what we're thinking. Uh, the second project for Community Park is the playground replacement, um, the current playground that's there is. At least twenty-five years old, it's seen better days, uh, we're constantly doing maintenance on that and just kinda trying to Band-Aid it and get it through. The new playground that we're looking to be completely poured in place, so rubber surfacing underneath. The entire playground which adds a huge ADA um element to the playground. Also, uh, we continue to serve our our kids that two to twelve years old, um, as I mentioned, a hundred percent accessible, so that's uh. That's a huge deal, um, pickleball courts we're looking at, I'm sorry, backing up pickleball courts, we're looking at about two hundred and twenty-five thousand as well as. The playground. So no questions there, I will move on. Yeah.
Two hundred and twenty-five for all of Community Park or two twenty-five per project?
Two twenty-five per project.
Thank you.
Um, moving on. Bach and Park, looking to start developing um the rest of Bach and Park, first thing. Uh, that we were looking to do is the skate park and a and a bike track or pump track, so it's basically. Uh, it's basically a skate park for bikes, um, but can be used by scooters and by by skaters as well. Um, this was originally identified in the financial management plan as twenty twenty-four. Um, there's been a group of uh of residents, young ones as as well as their parents that have asked us to push that. Forward into the twenty twenty-two budget, so what we're looking at um. Is approximately nine hundred and seventy-five thousand to develop that entire area, so that's about a ten thousand square foot. Skate park as well as about a ten thousand square foot uh bike track, so and again, that would be located. Uh, on the northern edge, northeastern edge of Bach and Park.
Would the the bike track's gonna be dirt or?
If the whole thing will be concrete.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so this is the the latest greatest in in developing bike tracks that um requires a lot less maintenance and. Yeah, pretty cool. Uh, let's see. This one over here. Okay, Red Hawk Park, if everyone can see that, uh, the area in blue was what was done in twenty twenty-one. The area in red is what we're looking at doing in twenty twenty-two. So, uh, originally this was designed, this was thought that we would pay for everything out of park development, we could not afford to do that in twenty-one. Um, so we did the playground and some sidewalk around that playground, in twenty-two, we're looking at. Developing the rest of that one acre uh park with a inline hockey rink as well as a like a twenty by twenty floor open air shelter. Um, and some bike racks, so we're that that project again is looking at uh about two uh two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. For that entire project. Um, so that will that will complete construction on Red Hawk Park, so once we get to that point, we are done there.
Sean, what's the material for the hockey rink?
That'll be concrete, concrete or blacktop, we're not really sure yet, um, but it's also something that we we can turn around and use in the winter. Uh, we'll be able to flood that and just plug the drain up and make that a another ice rink if we ever get a winter that's conducive for outdoor rinks.
Yes, my only question is the the difference. In costs between the Red Hawk project and then the Bach and Park project, is it just the sheer amount of concrete?
Exactly, yes.
Okay.
Exactly, that's it's the construction on um the skate park is roughly about. Three to four months to do all of that, everything is poured individually and um, so it's very labor intensive. But it's also something that's going to last virtually forever.
Yeah, is it between the skate park and the bike track, is it is there way more concrete in the skate park than in the bike than in the the pump track?
Correct, correct, way more concrete, yes.
Okay, that that'll save.
So that is Parks and Rec's uh projects that are potentially funded with borrowing.
You can continue Sean with the the outlets.
Okay.
So the these net, um, what Sean's gonna share next is th- these are non-levy dollars, but still some projects that are. Planned in West Lawn fourth edition. And and these are funded through the Park Development Fund.
Yep, thanks Matt, um, originally this was in the financial management plan for next year. Uh, once we we weren't really sure until elders got back to us how this was gonna be paid for. And once they came back and identified park development funds, uh, we wanted to move that forward into the twenty-two budget. Um, what we're looking at doing is, as you can see, we have uh three outlets and um. Just developing those small little pocket parks, the northernmost outlaw would have a fishing pier as well as some concrete to that. And then the um, the middle and the southernmost outlets would um have some park benches and park swings and things like that. Um, and some concrete obviously to to give them accessibility. And this would, if we were able to do that with park development funds in twenty-two, then all of West Lawn to this point will be developed. So that was kind of one thing that that we our committee and and folks kind of identified is that let's just, if we can, let's get this done and and move on. Overall, what we're looking at is about fifty thousand dollars of park development money that would um take care of those three outlets. That's all I have.
Alright, thanks Sean, you can stop your share and um. That concludes the staff presentation, so. President Williams, I can turn it back to you and you can, I can I can give you control back of the meeting.
Alright, thanks Matt and crew, appreciate all the the time and effort to put all that together. Uh, for for the board, so um, any questions or comments? Uh, from board members regarding what's been presented, uh, as Matt uh indicated earlier. This is, you know, an opportunity to really. Kinda get this to a a solid draft so that it can go out tomorrow, uh, get posted, as we posted thirty days. And um, then the board comes back together on the sixth of December to have a public hearing, hear what public has to say. As well as consider uh the final budget.
Just one minor edit there, John.
Oops, sorry, yeah.
That's okay, fifteen days, not thirty.
Oh, I don't know where I got thirty from, but thank you.
It's okay.
There's not enough days there, is there? Come up, nope, alright, um, so turning over to the board, any questions, comments regarding? What's been presented, the budget, um, what's proposed, etc.
Um, I just wanted to bring up about a leaf pickup truck, I know we've had. Discussions in the past about it and um I've talked to JJ uh the past few days. About a leaf pickup truck and um, this year we aren't getting a plow truck, it's not in our. Budget this year, and so I was trying to figure out a way that we could get it added. Considering that um truck ordering times are so far out. That if we ordered a truck this year. It would, we wouldn't have it until maybe twenty twenty-three. Um, it's so far out that it takes eighteen to twenty-four months from what I understand. So I was hoping to have a discussion um about that, uh, and JJ was looking at a few different options and um. JJ, if you can give us more information about what you told me as far as. Things that you you've uncovered or heard or looked up these past few days, I would appreciate that.
Um, absolutely, the 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 most recent purchases were a couple of municipalities I was able to touch base with, but. They went with uh what's called a J hook, so you basically buy a truck chassis and then. You buy a a leaf back unit that sits on there on the back, and then when you're done with that, you can unhook that and do something else with it. So when Melissa brought this up, I thought, well, that could be potentially then could be set up as a plow as well, and then we could do leaf back and then. It could be a plow, in talking with other public works directors, nobody's done that particular setup just because the wear and tear on a plow with the salt. And everything is different, you don't wanna, or at least I would be a little hesitant to start offering leave pickup. And then we beat the heck out of the truck while it's uh winter and we've got issues with it and. Can't, you know, that now we're not picking up the leaves the next time around or in the spring if we're offering a spring pickup, so um. The next question I I investigated and Baker Tilly got back to me really quickly. It does seem as though a leaf back, um, for the purposes of collecting leaves solely because it's a a stormwater. And water quality concern um would qualify for ARPA funding, so that could be something that the. Well, if go to the Public Works Committee, most likely first and then come here to the board and since we haven't. Solidified how we wanna spend our ARPA funds, that that's a potential option there, but like Melissa said. Um, lead times on just truck chassis from what I heard yesterday are order one today, maybe you see it. July of twenty-three and that is not even built to do anything, that's just from the truck manufacturer that's gonna give you. You know, something you still have to put dump box on or a plow setup on or a loop back on, so um. It's a, it's bad and it doesn't sound like there's any signs it's gonna ease up anytime soon, so um. It doesn't necessarily have to be an issue for discussion tonight, um, just because I don't think there would be a twenty-two budget impact, but. That being said, when Melissa called me, I did say the board would have to take some direction if they wants to be maybe even a shot at it late twenty-three. Or even twenty-four, because it would have to order something here and they're coming weeks or months probably to have any shot at that. And then I just reiterated in my conversation with Melissa, most of you have already heard this, that I really don't think the department can start. Offering leaf collection without adding our public works staff members, so. Any considerations on this, I would really just like that, like that to be known that uh, that comes along with the. You know, even if it's ARPA money and it's it's not hitting the levy, um, there's gonna be an impact because we're we're gonna need a person to staff that. For the three, three plus months that everybody tells me, once you start offering this, once the first leaf drops, just count on a staff member that that's gone. Doing it nonstop, so and the village is still a baby as a municipality and these trees keep on growing, so it just gets more and more every year. Anything else, Melissa, I think I tried to give real quick synopsis of the last couple of days of.
Yes, no, that was, that was great and um. I would note too is um, and JJ had presented to Public Works, I think that he is looking. At um hiring in twenty twenty-three, hoping to have additional staff people in the budget for twenty twenty-three. And if we were to have the leaf truck ordered and. With the board's approval in the next month, if it comes before us um at a regular board meeting, then um. The a person for Public Works wouldn't necessarily have to be hired immediately in January of twenty twenty-three. It could be in mid to late uh twenty-three when the leaves start falling. And we'd have the truck available too, so um, I I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention and. To, cuz it, it's been something that I brought up a lot and I know that others, other um trustees have brought it. Up too, and so I think it's something that we should definitely consider seriously since it will be. Like two years off, so um, thanks, yeah.
You'd have to put a down payment though, right, to hold a spot, right? Like for, I guess JJ, that's a question for you, I guess, I mean, like you'd have to put money down, so it'd need to be, if we wanted to do this, we'd have to put it in the budget. For a down payment and do we know what a down payment would be?
Most likely, see, the problem I have is since COVID, I have not purchased a a plow truck. Two different vendors I've used in my time prior to that, one, I didn't, we didn't have to pay anything until the delivery, so. Twelve fifteen months from the time I placed the order, then then it came due, um, the one we utilized for our last two though, there was. Uh, they preferred payment for the truck chassis. Um, and they offered, I think it was a one or one and a half percent discount by making that payment, so I mean, there is significant savings. Um, and most likely, I'm guessing, again, I haven't talked to anybody who's just ordered one with all the supply chain issues, so. Um, probably are gonna be some down payments required or something. But uh, I can find out more, again, this doesn't, it even that might not hit twenty twenty-two, they might wanna down payment whenever, just, you know. If they know if you're a municipality, you're gonna take it, you know, I can show them a a board motion and that's.
I think it, I just know from the fire trucks, right, like like we've had to put down payments on those, so I get, that's where my head's at on that one, I just. But if it, I guess, out of the manufacturers that you wanna. That you're thinking of going with, I guess, we could get, I I guess it. As the new guy here, right, like I'm trying to understand, when do we, when does the the option close to add anything? To the budget, I mean, like is tonight drop dead or do we have, was it fifteen days to add something? I guess that's it's a procedural question, I guess, here.
You you can technically technically do a budget, um, you can do an addition during the um. Public hearing, but the difficult thing then is then, you know, if the if public wanted to comment or review the budget. They wouldn't have the the notice, but it's technically, technically you can make any changes that at that final. At that final meeting, but if the decision was to do this and fund it with ARPA funds. It wouldn't be part of the budget anyway, that would be a separate discussion. That would be a separate discussion.
Matt, what is our timeline for deciding how to use our ARPA funds?
I, I think we've received probably all the requests that we're likely to receive and Baker Tilly has reviewed them. So we could, we could do that next month or January.
The other thing, sorry, Sarah.
I was just going to note.
I was just going to note that the, if, if we use ARPA funds and get the leaf pack on a truck, the ARPA funds would only cover the leaf pack, right? JJ, do I have that correct?
I was good. And I couldn't remember if I've thrown out numbers yet. Did I already say it's been?
No.
Right already. I've talked too much. It's expensive. Last time I looked and I think it was twenty sixteen, I had thrown a number out. And that might've been maybe you and I think Kyle Broome brought it up. So it's, it's been a while. And I was thinking it'd be maybe just over two hundred thousand based on prices we had seen with other municipalities. Based on two conversations I had, I think we'd be looking at three, three fifty, even up to four hundred thousand. And, but yes, to your point, if our funds were used, my thinking was though, that we could just order the, the leaf back on a, on the J hook truck chassis. And then in the future, that is the nice flexibility. It's just, it's such a new thing that I got to see how other municipalities are, are finding it. I don't like to be the earliest adopter, but it does sound like it's a really flexible tool. So then maybe we could throw in whether it's just a, a small sewer, sewer jetter that could be dropped on there. And it's not, it's not a whole plow unit, but it's something then you could use it the other eight, nine months of the year. Could be added into the capital plan in the future because hopefully the truck chassis would last ten to fifteen years. And then it does offer flexibility, but that upfront cost, if all we bought was that and the leaf back, I think would all qualify for our.
Thanks, JJ.
If I recall, at one time we had a leaf truck in the capital budget and it was taken out. And I believe it was taken out because of, we sent out a questionnaire with Polco. And basically citizens came back and said that they're in leap of a, in, in favor of a leaf truck, but they didn't want to cost them any money to any additional taxes to have that. Am I correct on that? That Polco did a questionnaire? And that the public responded and, and that's when it was taken out of the capital budget?
I honestly, I can't recall if we did a poll on that one or not. But that sounds familiar, Troy. Honestly, you know, a lot of anything you put out there, if people say yes and then, you know, the poll question is, do you like to pay for it? You know, you often get that no. So I don't doubt that's, that's not the case. I just can't remember if we did a particular poll call on leaf back.
I, I have a lot of great moments, JJ. You're lucky you don't. So don't worry about that. You know, the other part of this that we have to think about even longer term though, is once we have one, we have to look at replacement. And that's, that's, you know, we're assuming there's not going to be no funding for that. So that's entirely on the village. I, I think if you told someone that, you know, we're going to charge you fifty dollars if you're going to take up your leaves, they're going to say no. You know, it's going to cost every citizen money, even though part of it is, is for ARPA funds. The reality is it's still costing us money and labor and still costing us money and, and replacement down the road and maintenance.
I, I would note that all services that the village provides costs money for those services and needs replacement and upkeep and that's what local government is about. So I think it's worthwhile and I've heard from my neighbors who would like this service. And I think it's something that we need to discuss further as a board to decide if we do want to order one for twenty twenty-three because it's not going to happen in twenty twenty-two. So it's just something that we need to look forward and discuss more.
And I understand that, Melissa. If my neighbor came to me and said that, I'd say you might want to consider moving someplace else that has that. We can't be everything to everyone. That, that's reality. You know, our taxes continue to go up and we're, we're taxes are going up higher than the rate of inflation. I still don't understand why that is. Eventually, but people won't be able to afford to live in the village cottage grove. That's just reality.
But this isn't really up for discussion for the budget, right? I mean, we can talk about this at a upcoming board meeting?
Yes.
Yeah.
Confirming.
Yeah. I, I don't think, one, it's not on the agenda and two, it's, it's a fairly significant piece of equipment where the person probably needs a little more digging into to get some more answers. You know, ARPA fund or whatever. Obviously the ARPA funds, there's been some other things that thrown out. So the board really has to consider, if that's the route we choose, then you're going to lose some of those other things. And, and there'll be, there'll certainly, I think, a longer conversation about that with understanding lead times, costs, down payment, staff, et cetera. So.
Matt, I, I have a logistics question here or a tactical question. So when I look at this, at this packet and I look at the overall numbers, were, everything that I'm, that we were shown tonight is in the budget and was approved by the finance committee?
No. Every, everything except the beautification, increase, the brush collection contract and EV ready, otherwise everything else is in.
Okay. I guess the only, thank you for that. I guess the only thing I want to go back to is the B-cycle side of things. I guess, JJ, I mean, so it's, it's twenty thousand to buy the bikes. And then there's, is there an additional twelve thousand for maintenance in the next fiscal year?
Yes. Yep.
There's thirty-two thousand total. Has B-cycle indicated how often they'll come and rebalance the system? Or I mean, have they given any of those details or is this just build it and they will come?
This is honestly, I didn't do this work. This was another sustainability committee member. So I don't want to.
Okay.
Yep. I'm not positive myself, but assuming it stayed here, I would dig into it a bit more.
Okay. I mean, I know it's a budget item, right? Like we could budget for it and decide later, like put it off or something. Like, I like the idea. I just, I would love to see it just a little bit more flushed out. You know, I'm not saying no, but I'm just like, it's.
David, David, that one could be, so that's in the, the capital fund. And if it was not funded, it would, it would just reduce the amount of capital cash reserves that would be used. So that could be a consideration later to not, that, that would not impact the levy discussion tonight being that it's a separate capital item.
Okay. I guess even beyond the money, I'm just, it, it's a, I'm looking at the optics of it as well, right? Like it's a, we're a, you know, a small village with two B, like B-cycle stations. Like as a, as a cyclist myself, I'm really into the idea. But again, I'm, I'm thinking of the optics here and it's like, that's thirty grand that could have gone to something else. You know, so it's like, it just. And again, I'm only reading a blurb and a, and a, and a memo, right? So like, I don't, I don't want to downplay all the work that went behind the script. But like, based on what I'm reading here, it just, it doesn't seem fully baked yet. You know what I mean? And again, this is coming from a, a B-cycle enthusiast, right? And a cyclist. So I, I don't want to, I don't want to go on record that I like this idea, but I just, I really want to know more, have a deeper conversation. But Matt, to your point, this is not a big burden on the, on the budget, but a dollar is a dollar still.
Well, David, I'll just be, if it were up to me, which it's not, obviously it's up to the board and sustainability committee. But my thought would be, we wouldn't install anything anyway until our multiple light path projects were done next year. So the twelve thousand may only end up being two thousand as they, you know, they're installed in the fall. And then, because then I guess the, what I kind of heard from sustainability, and again, John or Heidi, correct me if I'm wrong, but was kind of, once we have a hotel, a fully full commerce park and then trails that you could, you know, even somebody that's inexperienced can hop on an off-road trail and basically get through most of the village and feel comfortable. Then back to their hotel room. It's kind of how I'm thinking. I'm picturing it's, it's mostly people visiting for one reason or another. So I, I don't think it'd be much impact because I think it would make the most sense way late in the year.
I wonder if this would be a consideration for our new tourism committee? Because it sounds like it's, if, if, if that's the intent is to gear it towards the hotel and tourists, I wonder if that would fit in there. But it sounds like either way, if we approve it in the budget, it's not like the sustainability committee is going out and buying them on January first. We would, we would see more detail, more project information, be able to have input into where the stations are and how it's right with. So I just want to confirm, right?
It is a good idea for the tourism committee and, and they, they will have room tax revenue. We don't really know how much that will be yet, but they'll, they will have funds to, to utilize in a not so distant future.
If I could change topics in a minute, I was a little surprised by the cost of the message boards. Forty-eight thousand dollars for two message boards and the irrigation for the baseball fields were the two that stick out to me as more than I would have expected. And part of my question is, do we have any revenue from the baseball fields? Do, do groups pay to use it that would help to pay for this irrigation system?
Let me, if I, Matt, if I can share the screen again, please. To Sarah, so you have an idea. You guys can see this. This is what it, if you can see that now, this is what it looks like to irrigate a baseball field. It's, there's a lot of stuff that goes to that. To answer your second question, what we are doing is as of, as of this year, MG baseball boosters are now contributing towards the maintenance of that field. And they have added some, some stuff to safety features as far as fence cap and things like that. So we're continuing to work with them and continue to, to not tax, no pun intended, not tax the board with making all of these budgetary decisions. So as we, we're only year one into it and they contributed five thousand dollars towards field improvements at Fireman's Park. So that'll be, that's something that's going into like a park development fund. So we'll keep growing that as we're moving forward. And, and again, with the intention of, of just continuing to develop that field and make that field the best that it can be and not have it all be on the levy or borrowing.
Sean, it costs us something to have a staff member up and do the rollout and everything and water that field as well, right?
Absolutely. Yeah. I mean, it's something we wheel out. It takes about an hour or something to pull back. We got to wheel it back out. So yeah, there's, there's, you know, each day that we do that, we probably spend a couple of hours of labor just wheeling that, our current sprinkler system out there.
Sarah, could you, could you ask, could you ask a question about the message boards? Again, I, the number that I mentioned, I thought.
Yeah. I, I'm wondering, do we, they're so expensive. Do we need two or would one this year work? And maybe twenty-four thousand dollars isn't much to haggle about, but just feels like that's a, that dollar amount right there is, would pay for the salary of I, of the marketing and communications position you're putting in this year, right? Or I don't know what budget is coming out of. I can't remember.
Yeah, they're two separate, two separate budgets.
Is it capital?
Yeah. But just to be clear, the, the message, so that line item is twenty-eight thousand four hundred. That includes two message boards and the traffic data.
I wrote forty-eight thousand dollars down. Maybe I had it wrong.
So I think it's, JJ, why don't you, why don't you clear that up?
Nope. I, I think you're right, Matt, but now I'm going to pull up the plan and make sure. But yeah, broadly, I think a message board is about twenty thousand dollars now. So that is probably an accurate number we've got in there if we had, because we have two that are planned for replacement. So, but I can pull it up and confirm.
So the forty-eight thousand dollars for two is accurate, you think?
Two message boards and that traffic data collector, the little.
Oh, I see. That was in the forty-eight thousand.
Yep.
Sarah, you're not alone. I'm, I'm, I'm reading this too. And the way it reads, it says it's forty-eight thou, the message replaces would be forty-eight thousand.
Yes, I'm looking at, so, so the numbers I'm talking about, so that, that has many other, that has utilities paying some. So as far as like the capital fund, the, the capital fund would be paying for twenty-eight thousand four hundred between two message boards and that traffic data collector.
How much per, but it's twenty grand per board. Like I just, if I wanted to go out and buy my own message board, what would it cost me?
It would be at least twenty thousand, I think. I, we do have, it actually is, okay, the forty-eight is planned, there, planned in the capital for, and again, this, this is just we, like, like Troy mentioned, if you buy something new. So to their credit, when they bought these message boards over thirteen years ago, they put them in the capital plan and just put it, I think it's three and a half percent increase on it. And we've got those at twenty-three thousand and change. So that forty-eight thousand is for two message boards. Just quick looking this fall, the ones I was seeing were right around twenty thousand dollars. Depends on the bells and whistles you want, how fancy you want to be able to do it, how, what, you can get a lot of technology in these things now. I don't know that we need that. So hopefully it will be around the twenty thousand.
Why are they so expensive?
I, I don't know what they put into them. I don't know how to do it. So I couldn't tell you.
I'm with Sarah and I'm going to go even farther. Like, wow, I, I didn't, I mean, that's like, it's like a Kia, you know, it's like a car, like. They're expensive. I guess I'm, I'm in shock.
They're also solar powered, right? So that adds to it. Every, all machinery is more expensive now than it was previously. So, and I think we need both, like, I think they're really important and I think we should have had more message boards sooner. So I'm, I'm excited. I'm excited for message boards.
Well, and, and we don't need, again, like, like Matt referenced earlier, this is, if we, if we find some for fourteen thousand apiece that serve our purposes, this money will stay in that capital fund. And, you know, it's used elsewhere. So.
He priced something, something like this out. Is there just one set vendor or you look into a couple of vendors or?
Oh yeah, we'll, we'll get bids. Basically, I think we'll probably talk and it may come to the Public Works Committee even to see what level of, of bells and whistles we want on it. Then we'll, we'll basically just bid it out there and see what we get.
I mean, like, do they come with, like, you can remotely, like they come with wifi and cellular? So you can change message on the fly?
Yep. Which, yep, there are really cool things, but then also those get me nervous because then it's just another thing that can be hacked. And, you know, I think it's cool that I can change a message when somebody calls with some information. But that also means somebody way smarter than me can hack it and say something about, you know, me. So.
No, JJ, you'll be fine. Just, just have a strong password. You'll be fine. Don't worry about it.
Yeah, we may not need the, all the, the top line.
I just want to, on that, I do agree with Melissa that I think that they're important to communicate. We have a bunch of road projects coming up. And if you remember back to Cottage Grove Road Project, I think we may have used one from the county to help. So I think it's important to have enough available in case those weren't available for our use in the future. Make sure we communicate detours and such appropriately.
I think they're important too. I just was commenting on the cost and, and, and wondering about it. So yeah, I agree. They are important. We do need to communicate and so.
Yeah. Yeah, they are. It does seem like a simple thing that costs a lot.
Fortunately, they last a long time though. And from the capital budget, it's not a huge impact on our taxes. So do you, I'm putting you on the spot. Um, do you, I'm putting you on the spot, Matt, um, what's the like you gave us the five thousand dollars was, and the operating budget was two dollars and ten cents impact on um, on a homeowner, average homeowner? Do you know what it is for the capital side of that?
So the, the, the capital, that's um, there's the levy, there's levy support to the capital fund, so that, that two dollars and ten cents um, that's included there as well, but the, the capital fund also is supported by um, its own cash reserves, the general fund contributing some cash and the miscellaneous revenue, so um un- unless you, so, so that two dollars and ten cents is still, is still relevant, but it, it's not relevant as far as if you um i- if you'd be looking to make a cut, it, you would, you would only start reducing the levy if you cut five hundred and thirty-seven thousand out of the capital fund. Um, so there's nine hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars in the capital fund proposed, and the levy is supporting four hundred thousand of that. And of that four hundred thousand um, five thousand dollars um for each five thousand of, of that four hundred thousand impacts two dollars and ten cents for the average home. So I, I get that that's a little complicated, but um anyway, if you, if you, if, for instance, if we didn't do the message boards, that would reduce the capital budget by twenty-some thousand dollars. And all, all that would do is it would reduce the amount of reserves in the, in the, that we're using for the capital fund. So the capital fund is proposed to use three hundred ten thousand in reserves. Um, that would just be, that number would be reduced.
And we wouldn't have message boards.
Right, right. But it wouldn't have, y- y- you wouldn't be able to start impacting the levy until un- unless you were adding to the four hundred thousand dollar number that, to include more levy support or to, to reduce it. Um, you know, we'd have to cut over half a million uh, from the capital fund. I know that wasn't your question, but that's, it, it's hard to really drill down to um the dollar-for-dollar type of analysis that you can do for the general fund.
Good. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Otherwise, this is a discuss and consider.
I'll make a motion to approve the recommended budget as presented tonight with the removal of the brush truck. I'm probably gonna forget the ones you said, um, but the way you presented, what, how you wrote your memo, Matt, basically, with, that you had included in there.
Sure, but then I, I would suggest, Sarah, you can just, it would be based on the recommendation from the finance and personnel committee.
Perfect. That's exactly the motion.
All right, we got a motion from Sarah, a second from David. Uh, any further discussion? Having heard none, and all those in favor, whoa, wait.
Sorry, sorry, I was on mute. I tried to get, um, I just, I just wanted to thank staff for all of their work in putting everything together um, and all the presentations and all the memos and all the explaining and um, it, I know it's a lot of work and I really appreciate the time and effort spent so that our community and um, we as trustees can understand it all better. So thank you.
Thanks, Melissa. And that, that reminds me to give a shout out to Alicia, our finance director, who was able to not speak again at a, at a budget meeting, but uh that's good that she didn't, that she didn't need to, but she was able to step in and the matter of uh, in a matter of a few weeks, get all this put together for us and um, so much appreciated and nice work, Alicia.
Nice job, you guys.
Thanks, everybody.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Uh, any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed?
Aye.
Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Uh, item six then.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Troy.
Second.
Thank you, Melissa. Non-negotiable. All those in favor then?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.
Nice night.